Are you going to the guest?
No, staff.
Staff. Same limit, twenty twenty-one, capital S, capital L. Put a sign on it.
It's just really weak, keeps cutting off office.
Same limit, twenty-one, twenty-two. Capital S, capital L. Okay, we are live.
Okay, uh, let's see for, let's go ahead and call to order our meeting here on March eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a roll call starting from left to right?
Emily Kaiser.
Tiffy, go ahead and down.
Carol Riley.
And Jeff Honeycutt, not in attendance today. Uh, we have Adrian, uh, Marissa Roberts, and Matt Darden. I think they'll be joining us a little bit later, though.
There's Echo.
Yeah, there's my. Uh, so, okay, so we have, we have our quorum. Uh, let's see, why don't we wait on the pledge of allegiance? Toffey, you have mentioned you had something you wanted to bring up.
Yes, um, I do want to call a, uh, executive session.
Okay, so motion.
Make a motion to, uh, call an early executive session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take a break, uh, for executive session. Quick.
I'm gonna estimate the time.
For some reason, I thought you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
One more thing I'll mention is that currently we're working on some summer school plans, both intervention-based and enrichment-based, which we will be sending that out to the community very soon to provide kids opportunities for this summer.
Okay, thank you. For point one, I see personnel changes.
So we have two new hires, both replacements, and they started on the 21st of February.
And it's an 11th grade English teacher and a bus driver?
That's correct. We're very, very excited to have both of them.
Great. Any questions from the board members for Dr. Roberts on the district update?
Sorry, go ahead.
Do you have interest from staff for that?
So the survey went out, I believe today. We're getting interest from the staff on who would be interested in teaching specifically summer school, since intercession is coming up very shortly. So once we get that in line, then we'll begin building our programs and sending that out to parents for interest.
Celebrate the arts program that we usually have around this time of year. What has happened to that?
So that was put together by the PTG, and I just don't think it's happening. That was not actually put together by us. That was a PTG put-together thing. And I assume they decided against doing that because of COVID. So hopefully next year, because it was fun.
Go ahead. Any other questions for Dr. Roberts on item four? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move on to comments from the public. I'm not sure that I have a sheet.
And I'm sorry, with the new system, we have three people that are set to speed. Kenneth Parks is the first one, then Amy Standen.
And then who is last? I'm sorry?
Brooke Payne.
Okay, are they in person or are they online?
Mr. Standen is here.
Brooke Payne is here, Mr. Parks is here, and who is...? So just two? Okay, so Kenneth Parks was first on the list?
Yes.
Thank you for giving me a few moments.
One second, before we start. I just need to make sure I get the timer going. Just remind everyone, each speaker gets... is it three or five? Three minutes? Each speaker gets three minutes. So I will go ahead and start that. Yeah, go ahead.
I was intrigued when I was reading through the history of our academy by the statement that this wanted to be the greatest of the charter schools in the state of Arkansas. And we were going to head hard towards that direction. So I got to thinking, what is the best charter schools, the best high schools in the state of Arkansas? The Department of Education publishes that information. Number one, and two, switch back and forth year by year. Haas Hall, Bentonville Tigers. I remember when Haas began. I remember when Bentonville was the bottom of the list. It took time for them to develop and grow. What are the three components of each school? Academics, art, athletics. They started like my grand... my son, who is a member of the basketball team this year, never played basketball, never was on a team, never was in the game. But he scored. He learned. He progressed. Then I thought about our soccer team. Many of those players who are on the basketball teams are playing soccer. We're winning. We're improving. We're going forth. We're learning more and more and more. Why? My son, who never played basketball, has played on seven soccer teams. He knows what to do. He's learning. He's moving. He's growing. All areas of this school are in transition. All of our students are growing. All of our students need time, and we need support, and we need the board to be strong and to support those three elements completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was our last speaker? I'm sorry. Brooke Payne. Okay, there we go. Thanks, Brooke.
Can you guys hear me? Can I use this?
We got you.
Am I loud? I like a microphone. Alrighty. And I wish you guys did too, okay? That has been one thing that I have really... that's what you need to fix, Dr. Appleton. We need to always have a microphone everywhere when there are speaking so parents can hear. Just on your list. Put that on your list somewhere on there. All right, all right. All right. I just want to say, I sent you this email. I did not get a response. Maybe that's something we need to work on. So because if parents are going to send you something, it'd be nice to know that you got it and you read it, whether that's just one board member sending it. So I'm being the teacher and going tsk, tsk, but it would be nice to know that you got it, okay? So that's just something I would like to put out there. So I'm just going to read this into the record in case there's other parents and teachers that would like to hear. I just want to say thank you for your care of Arkansas Arts Academy District. Every single one of you, I appreciate so much. We've never had a board like this. We've never had a CEO who speaks to the teachers and the parents in the way that you all do and asks for our opinion. So even though I tsk, tsk you, I do want to know. Thank you. Okay, our family, my family, has had the very unique perspective of having one child on both campuses for the last 12 years. So we've seen a lot of stuff. This campus and this school has given our children opportunities to sing and dance and play and draw and get a college prep and have art and design apprenticeships right out of school. We've graduated four from Arkansas Arts Academy, and I'm hoping to finish off the crew in the next six years. Think, hopefully. During our family's 12 years at AAA, there has never been a more engaged board. I've already said that. There's never been, in my opinion, there's never been a superintendent or a CEO that has been as active in driving up academic standards and creating a path to excellence in all the areas than what I've seen in the last eight months. And so I give you my sincere thanks for that, okay? And I've been able to see that because recently you hired me as your seventh to 12th grade reading interventionist dyslexia therapist, and I'm extremely excited to do that. It's great privilege.
So that was put together by the PTG. And I just don't think it's happening.
Okay.
That's, that was not actually put together by us. That was a PTG put-together thing.
Okay.
And I assume they decided against doing that because of COVID. So hopefully next year, because it was fun.
Hopefully.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No? Any other questions for Dr. Roberts on item four? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move on to comments from the public. I'm not sure that I have a sheet.
And I'm sorry, we, with the new system, we have three people that are set to speed. Kenneth Parks is the first one, then Amy Standen.
And then who is last? I'm sorry?
Brooke Payne.
Brooke Payne. Are they in person or are they online?
Mr. Standen's here.
Brooke Payne's here, Mr. Parks is here, and who is?
Okay.
So just two?
Just two.
Okay, so, so Kenneth Parks was first on the list?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me a few moments.
One second, Mr. Parks, before we start. I just need to make sure I get the timer going. Just for everybody, just remind everyone, each speaker gets, is it three or five? Three minutes, three minutes? Each speaker gets three minutes, so I will go ahead and start that. Yeah, go ahead.
I was intrigued when I was reading through the history of our academy by the statement that this wanted to be the greatest of the charter schools in the state of Arkansas. And we were going to head hard towards that direction. So I got to thinking, what is the best charter schools, the best high schools in the state of Arkansas? The Department of Education publishes that information. Number one, and two, switch back and forth year by year. Haas Hall, Bentonville Tigers. I remember when Haas began, I remember when Bentonville was the bottom of the list. It took time for them to develop and grow. What are the three components of each school? Academics, art, athletics. They started like my grand, my son, who is a member of the basketball team this year, never played basketball, never was on a team, never was in the game, but he scored. He learned, he progressed. Then I thought about our soccer team. Many of those players who are on the basketball teams are playing soccer. We're winning. We're improving. We're going forth. We're learning more and more and more. Why? My son, who never played basketball, has played on seven soccer teams. He knows what to do. He's learning, he's moving, he's growing. All areas of this school are in transition. All of our students are growing. All of our students need time, and we need support, and we need the board to be strong and to support those three elements completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was our, who was our last speaker? I'm sorry. Brooke Payne, okay, there we go. Thanks, Brooke. Let me go ahead and start.
Can we hear, can we hear? Can you guys hear me? Can I use this?
We got you.
Am I loud? I like a microphone. Alrighty. And I wish you guys did too, okay? That has been one thing that I have really, that's what you need to fix, Dr. Appleton. We need to always have a microphone everywhere when there are speaking so parents can hear. Just on your list. Put that on the, on your list somewhere on there. All right, all right, all right. I just want to say, I, I sent you this email. I did not get a response. Maybe that's something we need to work on. So, because if parents are going to send you something, it'd be nice to know that you got it and you read it. Whether that's just one board member sending it, so I'm being the teacher and going tsk, tsk, but it would be nice to know that you got it, okay? So that's just something I would like to put out there. So I'm just going to read this into the record in case there's other parents and teachers that would like to hear. I just want to say thank you for your care of Arkansas, Arkansas, Arkansas Arts Academy District. Every single one of you, I appreciate so much. We've never had a board like this. We've never had a CEO who speaks to the teachers and the parents in the way that you all do and, and ask for our opinion. So even though I tsk, tsk you, I do want to know. Thank you. Okay, our family, my family, has had the very unique perspective of having one child on both campuses for the last 12 years. So we've seen a lot of stuff. This campus and this school has given our children opportunities to sing and dance and play and draw and get a college prep and have art and design apprenticeships right out of school. We've graduated four from Arkansas Arts Academy, and I'm hoping to finish off the crew in the next six years. Think, hopefully. During our family's 12 years at AAA, there has never been a more engaged board. I've already said that. There's never been, in my opinion, there's never been a superintendent or a CEO that has been as active in driving up academic standards and creating, creating a path to excellence in all the areas than what I've seen in the last eight months. And so I give you my sincere thanks for that, okay? And I've been able to see that because recently you hired me as your seventh to 12th grade reading interventionist dyslexia therapist, and I'm extremely excited to do that. It's great privilege. I think most of the teachers know that I've been wanting to do that for like 12 years, and so thank, thank you so much for giving me that opportunity. That being said, I want to work myself out of a job. I do not want dyslexia therapy on this campus. But that's, that's something we'll work on. I just want to talk about being the dyslexia therapist and masks. I can't get these kids to take their masks off, and I cannot do my job with the masks on. Your speech therapists cannot do their job with the masks on. I need to be able to see my students' faces, and I need my students to be able to see my faces and my lip movements in the, so I can properly remediate them for language, and I can build a relationship, and I can move them forward toward independence. Because part of me being here is, is because they are not independent in their reading. You don't, we don't need that out there anymore. We need, we need independent children. Many of these students right now are using them as a security blanket, a way to hide them from the insecurity of growing up, which sucks. We all know, sounds great. Okay, can we take the masks off? I want to see my kids. I want to see their lips. We have, we have vaccines. We have, you can make the choice. They want to keep the mask on, have that choice, right? They don't, that's fine. I'm not going to fuss at you. But if I need to take the masks down, I need to be able to see it, and I need somebody outside. I have the nurse come in and say it's okay for one second, but Mike, they're, they're hiding behind it, and I need that off. So thank you.
I don't know if I'm turning you off. If you're not, why?
I know, I think she turned the light off with the microphone. All right. Thank you, thank you, public, for the comments. Let's move on to item number six, which is the student council report. Is Roddy with us?
Jeff, sorry. The, the sign up, I received it at 2:45 today, so I received the sign up to speak at 2:45 today. I don't know if other people received it earlier, but I don't know if there's others that want to.
For comments from the public?
For comments, correct, sorry. So I don't know if there's others that didn't get a chance to sign up. We, I don't, if we have five slots, I don't know if we want to.
Is there anybody else present that, that wanted to address the board? No? Okay.
Okay, there we go, sorry.
That's all right. Item six, student council report? Sorry? Okay. So let's move on to item seven, the consent agenda. So first, we will take a moment to review and, and possibly approve the February board minutes. Do you guys all have a copy of those or have you had a chance to review them? Any questions or comments about the February 8th minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, item 7.2, financials. Were there any issue, or I know we've all had a chance to review those as well. Any issues with financials or any questions? You know what, let's just go through all these before we take a motion to approve the whole thing. Enrollment report, or I'm sorry, yeah, enrollment report was next. Same question. Any issues, any questions? All right, let me have a, and then lottery update. Dr. Roberts, is that something you updated us on?
I can. We had the lottery. We did that on Friday, and you'll see the report. We've got a really incredible waitlist of all the ones where, the green is our cap, where we're at, we determine the most, a number of students per grade level. The next slot over is the accepted spot, so we had made those contacts, and we are, for the first year, at our cap at 1225. And then we have a nice waitlist that's on top of the ones that have been accepted. So we're in really great standing currently for our enrollment.
Good.
Really pleased.
Good deal. Any questions on, on the lottery update for Dr. Roberts? If not, I'll take a motion just to approve the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, new business. The first being the proposed testing calendar.
So the testing calendar has been presented to you, and basically it is just discussing.
It is, it should be.
It is when we, the dates that we will provide, all of the, oh, here we go, the preliminary for our ACT, moving on down to the, the next year, when we'll do our summative, our, all of the tests for now until next summer, or next May 2023. What's important about kind of having this in, in view is then parents can also look at the calendar and compare to when the testing calendar is, and they can kind of match up dates. And so we're, Heather did a great job getting this out early. It's terrific that we have this in advance, so this is just to present to you for your information.
Do we set those dates?
No.
Okay.
For the most part, we, we set some of the, the smaller, the internal dates, but the ACT, the work keys, all those are mandated dates.
I, the only one I was going to question is on March 28th, because it's right around our spring break, spring intercession.
Yeah.
That falls around that time?
We have, there is a, the 28th through the 31st, so there is time in that, that pocket of when no, that we can work around. So if a student misses their makeup dates and things like that.
I don't buy y'all, but I hated that.
I, I don't know how much control we have over this.
I know, that's why I asked that.
Kind of mandated.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have dates for SAT and PSAT? I didn't see those on the schedule.
We do not. I don't, they're not on here, so I don't know those offhand. Those are external, so we would have, kids would go elsewhere to take those. So there are a lot of different ways and places kids can take that, but we can definitely advertise that out to kids once we have that.
Okay. Any further questions on the testing calendar?
Did we, was the decision made to, for the days, make our makeup days? I don't know if I can bring that up here.
Yeah, but we're going to discuss that. Yes. No, you're, you're getting ahead of us. That's good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this topic? If not, we'll move on to the next, which is the Arkansas Arts Academy Foundation. I know Garrett Small was going to be in attendance to talk this over. He was not able to make it today, so we'll be moving past this and probably rescheduling for next month's agenda. That brings the COVID update from Nurse Katie.
I have a song. I'm just kidding. So we have fewer than five active cases right now with zero in quarantine, and that's for the entire district. Cases have decreased significantly since January. February 25th, the CDC released new mask guidance. Benton County is listed on the CDC website as in a low level of infection, which means that you wear a mask based on your personal preference and personal level of risk. We've had, as Brooke pointed out, vaccines available for 12 and up since May of last year, for five and up since end of November, December timeframe.
What's our percentage vaccinated?
So I reached out to the same Department of Health representative who gave me the vaccination rates last time, because otherwise I have to go through by each individual student, pull that every time. And I don't think that she's no longer, I don't think she's doing that any longer, because the Department of Health has also told schools they no longer have to report positive cases to the state. So I think a lot of the employees that they had doing COVID-related things, they're now going back to their regular jobs. So the only tests that we have to report to the state are the ones that we perform ourselves.
Good sign.
Yes. And that's all I got?
So, one quick question for you. It sounds like with the cases dropping where they are and reading between the lines with comments on masks, is it your recommendation at this point that we could drop the mask mandate for students and teachers?
Yes.
You seem very, very.
Yes.
Fine about that, about that date, yes. Okay. So I'd like to open up that discussion to the board for any comments about, about possibly dropping the mask mandate at the elementary school campus and high school campus.
In favor?
In favor. I just have to say, I recently had to start wearing glasses again, and for everybody that has to wear glasses, I don't know how y'all did it. I really don't. But here's, here's my personal take. I have a love-hate relationship with the mask. I think it, it's very handy sometimes. I think it's not. I carry mine with me at all times. I think, based on everything that I've been reading with the news and like, you know, the way that cases are dropping and seeing, hearing from you, Nurse Katie, I feel like we should be okay dropping the mandate, but leaving it as, if, you know, parents, kids want to put their mask on, hey, put their mask on.
And we will keep them on hand.
Right. And if a parent is adamant for their younger kids to say, hey, you know, please help my kid to make sure that they keep their mask on, you know, maybe we should kind of try to accommodate that. And, you know, I think at this point, like, it doesn't, if, if we don't, we're going to be like the old. You know, I mean, nobody, nobody's wearing them anymore. If cases are continuing to drop, it's becoming a personal, you'll probably see me wearing masks more than often, but
Case numbers from everything I've seen, I think everybody, everybody's seen, they're down to pre-Delta type levels. I, I personally, I agree with both Matt and Taffee and yourself that it's time for us to drop that, that regulation, that mandate in the schools. So.
I just ask that people continue to be responsible. If your kid is sick, take care of that kid. Don't send him to school because you have to go to work, whatever. And like, that's how things start getting bad again. Let's continue to be adults and responsible.
Any other comments on this topic before we call for a motion?
I'll, I'll just, I'll, you know, Arkansas's vaccination rate has been stagnant for months. We're in the mid-50s. It doesn't seem to be changing, and COVID is now endemic. It's never going to go away. I, I wish everyone would get vaccinated, but this situation is now permanent, and it's going to be what it's going to be. So I concur.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, can I get a motion?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
Riley, you said Arkansas is in around the 50s. How's?
Our vaccination rate is in the, in the mid-50s.
How does Benton County compare to the rest of the state?
That's a good question. I'm on the answer too. I did just look up, our community positivity rate is 10%, which is pretty decent, you know? It'd be nice if it was below five. It hasn't been below five since, I don't, ever, so, yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, to drop the mask mandate?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We take them off the draw right now?
Do we like, like, graduation caps, graduation caps? There we go.
This is the guy who got it two weeks ago.
I see that. I noticed that. Thanks.
My kids are going to be excited when I get home from this meeting.
My face feels so free right now. It feels great. But yet awkward. Let's see, so we have one more item under new business, and that is the start and stop times report. Dr. Roberts?
So.
Now you start coughing. Somebody get her a mask. The mandate's back on.
Cause of joy.
All right, Dr. Roberts, sorry, go ahead.
If you remember our last board meeting, we, we voted on the calendar, and we voted on the alternative calendar, and we put a pause on the start and stop times because we still needed a little bit more of the community feedback. So I sent that back out, and there's about a 48 to 52% variance on whether we start at 7:45 at the elementary and end at 3:15, and.
Eight to 3:30.
Eight to 3:30, and then the high school would be 30 minutes after that. So the community feedback is preferable eight o'clock start at the elementary. I think we're, at this point, it's close enough to 7:45 at that. We can, we can adjust to that.
So eight to 3:30 at the elementary, we'll put the high school at 8:30 to four, which is the current?
Correct.
Is there any reason why the times are staggered? Is it just a lot of parents who have both, children on both campuses?
And transportation, because we do bus kids from the elementary here and, and the reverse.
Okay.
So it just allows us to use our buses. So really, that's, we just need a board decision that we can go ahead and approve the eight to 3:30 for elementary, and then the 3:30 to four, for, I mean, the 8:30.
8:30 to four.
To four, at the high school.
That's to correspond with the calendar that we voted on last year?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Does the bus schedule need to be discussed right now, or does that separate?
So I sent that bus schedule out with, earlier, so that those will still the same, and the impact, when we look at that, the impact that has on the buses is, it's only going to impact the K6 North route, and that will be a 15-minute delay. The other two routes, the 712 North and the K12 South, will have the existing times.
15-minute delay in the morning or the afternoon?
It will pick up at seven in the morning versus 6:45. And it will, it will drop off at four for the very first stop versus 3:30.
Did the staff get to participate in this?
They did. Yeah, they were, everyone was sent the survey to provide input. The, of the, the big thing really trying to manage is just teachers' time with duties before school starts and making sure that we are not stretching their responsibilities out beyond their capacities to get to their class and be ready for instruction. So that was the, so that was why we were looking at producing that, but I think we can agree that based on community feedback, we can manage.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for moving the elementary school schedule to eight, for eight o'clock start to 3:30 dismissal, and secondary campus to, what was it?
8:30 to four.
8:30 to four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. For discussion of items, since the publication of this agenda, one thing that got left off was Teacher of the Month. So I want to add that to this portion. So we have two Teachers of the Month. Do you want us to all stand and get in front like we normally do?
Yes. Yes.
All right. This, this frame might need a little love. It's, okay, nevermind. I think I gave it an 11.8. Okay, so Teacher of the Month at the elementary school campus is Katie Melika.
Teacher of the Year for the last five years.
All right, thank you. Okay, one more, one more. And for the secondary campus, David Singleton. David with? Not with us. Well, that'll give us a chance to fix Mr. Singleton's brain. So, we want to help. Okay, item 10, let's see, do we have any need for an additional executive session today?
Do I do Student of the Month?
Sorry?
Student of the Month.
I don't have anything for Student of the Month.
One more thing, Jeff, if I can add one more thing.
Sure.
If we could talk about the snow days.
Sure.
In the, in the mist day. So the, there was a lot of confusion when we rolled into the snow days versus the remaining AMI day, when those days were going to be made up. There was a misprint on the calendar, so we will work hard to make sure that is, that doesn't happen again. But what we have to determine is when we will make up the two days we've missed so far. But what we have to determine is when we will make up the two days we've missed so far from the snow. And hopefully that will be our own too. So our option is taking some from the vacation days in May or adding to the end of the year.
What day is the end of the year? So the last day of school?
We would add the 16th and the 17th.
Does that, what day? Last day of school?
The last day of school right now is the 15th.
Which is what day of the week?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
So the 16th is a professional development day for teachers. So we would, if we chose to add on to the end of the year, we would just add on the 16th and the 17th to make up for the two.
Would they have to make up that PD day on the following Monday?
No, we would just, we would just take that off.
And refresh your memory, the time off that's in May, is it a full week, is it three days? I'm forgetting.
But the week break in May, the May break is a week from the 16th to the 20th. And then there's a Memorial holiday, the Monday on the 30th.
My first thought, I'm not sure how many people have booked vacations for that week in May. That might throw a monkey wrench into some plans if people have booked any kind of travel, have any kind of, you know, travel commitments and such, and that could really screw them up. But, you know, then again, adding days to the end of the year may not be the funnest thing in the world either. So I'm kind of hoping there are
And that was kind of my thought, but seeing that the school ends in the middle of a week, the last day, I think like, it would, for personally, you know, as a parent, I would see it as I would rather add like a day at, you know, that last week of school, rather than mess up a vacation that I might have already booked something for.
Dr. Roberts, what do our teachers want to do?
Yeah, I'm more concerned about bringing the year out, making them work longer than just putting the days back in that May break.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
I'm more concerned about asking them to work two more days when the kids are already, they're not engaged. Everybody else is out of school. It's really hard to get their, keep their attention.
I'm trying to read faces as we're talking here, counting, counting nods.
They want May.
And to that point, we don't have to decide today. But we do have to decide, and I'm very happy to ask the staff what their opinion is in the community. But the realization is we have to do something in those
When we put out our calendar, didn't we note in the calendar that if there were extra days, they would be pulled from that week in May?
That's for next year though, that was not determined for this year.
So when this cal, when this calendar went out, it said they would be pulled from the Memorial Holiday. And we missed, missed days will be made up during the May Memorial Holiday.
Oh, that's on the current calendar.
The May Memorial Holiday is one day. That's what it says on this calendar for this particular year. So it's already stated. The problem is, we have another day to add on. So we, based on what this agreed calendar is, it could be that May 30th, but then we have one, another day.
So, hold on. So the way that the calendar was printed is that basically Memorial Day was going to be the makeup day?
Yeah, it's, yes.
When I read it, as it would come out of that week, because that whole week was the holiday.
And that, and I think that's what we determined also going forward. Like, next year, if this happens again,
Yes.
it will be taken out of the May break.
Yes.
Right?
It was just the logistic wording. Because it says Memorial Holiday, and actually, Memorial Holiday is listed on that as one day. And then the other May is called May Break.
I would rather give them the Memorial Weekend because a lot of people have off working stuff. And then take it out of that. Take it out of the break.
Yep. And it looked, based on the reaction, by the way, now that we can see faces.
There's a lot of May, there was a lot of, there was a murmur of May that I picked up.
Yeah. We want to go ahead and
If you're asking us for a vote now, I don't feel like, I mean, based on reading the faces in the room and just the discussion we've had, I don't feel like we need to necessarily delay this.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to pull these from May.
So we'd pull them from the beginning, the 16th and 17th? After the break, this is the Monday and the Tuesday.
Sure, I guess Dr. Roberts said.
Yeah, because then you're off that following Monday, so we don't want to break that up.
I think that would be those.
Okay. So that's May 16th, 17th, 18th. So a motion to pull these, these extra days from May 16th and 17th.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Can we discuss in relation to that, what is the reason that we follow the Rogers weather policy? Can we not, because I mean, the last time, the reason, oh, one day anyways, is because Rogers, a lot of the schools called because we were expecting implement weather. And then we had an entire day with nothing that came out of the sky. So we could have been at school that day. So I don't know, is that something, what is the reason that we follow the Rogers implement weather policy? Can we have our own? Okay.
Is it, is it hard to keep up with it if we have our own? I mean, that, I think it's easy to kind of be
Just in working in a bigger district, most of those bigger districts have multiple people who are driving the known places where buses might or might not get stuck. So that's, so they're collecting data consistently. And the uniqueness of our 50-mile diameter, 25-mile radius, 50-mile radius, is that it would be very difficult to figure those things out.
And we have to
That is a slightly unique part about
We have to consider all the way north and all the way south of our district.
South of Fayetteville to Bella Vista. I mean, those are
But I imagine too, there are many families that have some kids at the Arts Academy, and other kids in other places. So that's kind of a reason to, to, I guess, follow, follow, I guess, what some of the other districts are doing. I get what you're saying, though. I get frustrated when I wake, you know, we have a day that's off. So clearly no reason why we need to stay home. Of course, it's frustrating, but it kind of is what it is sometimes.
I mean, to that point that you just made, at that point, you have to keep in mind Fayetteville School District. You have to keep in mind Benton, like, not just Rogers, because we have communities that live in Fayetteville.
Sure.
Another unique thing to that is if our staff have kids in those districts, and those districts close early during the day, that's a more localized radius, whereas our parents trying to come from Eureka to get their kid in the middle of the day when the sleet starts falling, that gamble is not as, those odds are not as in our favor as local, locally zoned districts.
You helped us out, the lights are
You turned the lights on.
Okay, any other discussion of new items? And we already had executive session, so unless there's a need to call a second one, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Debbie, yeah? Oh, do we have those? Oh, great.
Seventh grade student of the month is Ellen Lambert. Ninth grade is Jewel Coon. And 11th grade is Jacob Swindle.
Hey, congrats to those three, and thank you for sharing that. So now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you start motion, I just want to make a comment real quick. I don't know how many of y'all are aware, but Arkansas Academy did compete in the state championship archery this past weekend. I was there, my daughter competed there, we did great. We had a student qualify for nationals. And our high, or middle school team, I think, came in eighth, I believe. I don't have all the numbers in front, but they had a great showing. They acted like professionals out there. It was just an amazing event watching them compete. This is the third time I've been to those, to that tournament with the school. And it's just made me feel very, very proud to be part of Arkansas Arts Academy. So just kudos to the school and to the program for that.
Any other items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn. One more. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?